Good morning, everyone. If we would, please silence your phones. As you can see, we're kind of short. Several commissioners today, but we are reconvening. The meeting from November the 17th. Mr. Pate, I think you have the invocation.
Yes, sir, I do. This is Powerheads. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this hour and ask you for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us a desire to find ways to excel in our work. And in the name of the Son, we pray. Amen.
I think you have pledged?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Honeycutt, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do. We do have a couple of budget amendments that we would like to add. And then after budget amendments, I do have one additional thing. So with that said, I'll turn that to Allison for the budget amendments.
Before you do that, Neil has reminded me that y'all need to vote to have Mr. Acock act as your temporary chairman today.
I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Acock serves as our temporary chairman in view of the fact that Mr. Dolores is unable to attend.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Acock?
It's nine o'clock. We are here for our public hearing.
Oh, the adjustment.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
They're under consent.
Yeah. We've added a couple of.
The budgets.
Do we want to do the public hearing first or?
Discussion. Go ahead and do it.
Okay. We do have a couple of things under consent. Number one is appointment committee recommendations that were made on the 17th of this month. We'd like to add that under consent as well as the budget amendments.
Hold on, let me get it ready.
And we would also, under new business after consent, we would like to add the setting of a public hearing for December 15th at 9:00 a.m. for incentives for ground lease at the Wayne Executive Jetport.
And that's on a new business?
Do we want to go ahead and go with the budget amendment for Allison or we want to go ahead and do the public hearing?
If somebody would move to approve the adjustments to the agenda.
Best to approve.
All in favor, aye.
And I think you could then have your public hearing.
All right, let's go ahead and have the public hearing. The public hearing is to receive public comment on a proposal to convey up to 3.11 acres and provide an incentive grant to B R P Goldsboro LLC not to exceed $500,000 for the purpose of constructing and operating a 2,500-square-foot convention of convention rooms in Briscoe Restaurant. Mr. Pate, I think you.
Oh, we need to do the public hearing.
The public hearing, okay. Does anyone have any comments at the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, if you like, I'd be glad to kind of give an update of where we're at and how we got to this point.
Do you want to do it? You want James to or?
Well, I was going to mention it and then have James.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. This is a really good day for Wayne County. It's especially a good day for our convention center. And this was something we've been working on ever since I've been here for the past three and a half years, is trying to get a hotel at the convention center. And it was one of those chicken or the egg. What came first, the convention center or the hotel, or the hotel or the convention center? So we put the chicken first. We showed that our commitment was for the site and for convention center. But we knew to be successful that we had to have additional meeting room space, but also a hotel on site for it to truly be a convention center. And we have been working probably the last seven months with Mr. Buchan Patel. Mr. Patel is the owner of BPR Properties LLC, and they're in the process of looking at constructing a hotel of a Hilton brand that he's already had franchised of at least 100 rooms with sufficient breakout rooms to accommodate three rooms between 1,800 and 2,400 feet of conference room space additional to the Maxwell Center. But as part of this, the county and the city will work on conveying 3.1 acres of that site to him for the hotel and for building the conference rooms. The county will give him up to $500,000. And that will be paid over once COs and everything has been approved. So Mr. Patel is here if he wants to say anything or if you have any questions. But I think we'll start off by having James Wade, and I think also Ashlyn Gatler is here
Good morning, everyone. As Craig said, we are very excited about the thoughts of a hotel. I'm going to just tell you some of the reasons that it's good for us and what we're asking them to do that they've agreed to do. We started promoting the Maxwell Center before it was ever opened. We started going to conferences such as A N C, which is the Association Executives of North Carolina. In North Carolina, there are just under 1,000 different associations that are members of that. These are groups that have regional meetings and statewide meetings. And so we go to a conference they have where all of the people with these different groups actually come and talk to us. We also went to one in New Orleans called Connect that's for the southern United States. And we've been to Convention South, Rendezvous South, which deals with the southern states and different events and conferences and conventions. And so when we go to these, we literally are talking to people face to face who are making the decisions about where they want to come and where they can do their conference. And what happens is when we start telling them about our building and showing them the pictures and the videos, they fall in love with it. It's a great-looking building. Oh, that's just the size, you know, we need for our big group. And they'll talk to us and start getting details. And then they'll say, and what's your site hotel? And we're like, well, we have several hotels within a three-mile distance. Oh, you don't have a hotel right there. And they close their book that they've been taking notes in. And they look at us and smile and say, this is a great facility. We love the location in eastern North Carolina, but we really can't talk to you about coming there until you have a site hotel. So that was the first big hurdle is we just, the site hotel itself is great for us. Some of the other things and the reason that we're wanting to help the hotel out with the incentive is when we talk to some of these groups and we also get bids, there's a couple of different ways that we get RFPs from different groups that are wanting to come. And so in their RFPs, they'll lay out the things that they want or need, square footage, number of rooms and all of that. And so one of the things that a lot of them lay out is they need breakout rooms. Well, the Maxwell Center has four smaller classroom-sized breakout rooms, but a lot of the conferences need six or eight. We don't have that many. So by the hotel adding some meeting rooms, we've asked a lot of these groups, so would it work if you had to walk across the parking lot to the hotel for a couple of these rooms? And they're like, that would be fine. One, because there'd be a hotel there, and two, because that would give them the number of rooms they need. So from the beginning, we have asked all the different hoteliers that we've met with to please consider adding meeting rooms so that we have the additional meeting rooms that we need to go after some of these particular events that seem to be very interested in coming to Goldsboro. It's a great location for them. It's an easy drive when they have people from Wilmington, Greenville, Raleigh, you know, we're sort of in the middle of all of that. So we're a great location, they're telling us, but they need this, this, and this. So if we can get the hotel, that's the first step. If we can get the meeting rooms that we need that are in addition to the ones we have, that's the second step of being able to offer them exactly what we need. Now, the other challenge that sometimes people have is when they go to that hotel, they want to be able to grab a bite to eat after the session or in the morning. And so by having a hotel that has a bistro where they offer some type of food for our folks, that is another thing that has been asked for and that the hotel has agreed that they could do. And so that is the second reason that we're looking at giving an incentive to get those meeting rooms and to get that bistro. Now, when we look at how the Maxwell Center has done, before it ever opened, it was estimated that it would do maybe 50 events a year. Our first year, we did 102 events. Our second year, we did 200 and some events. We have done over $5 million each of the last two years in economic impact. And that's without having very many of these larger events that we're hoping down the road to get. So if we can get all of this, the economic impact to Wayne County and Goldsboro is going to be so much more than what we're putting into it. We are going to be able to attract some of these events and keep these events. We really do think that post-COVID, we will still do well. And some of the reasons I say that is from January to March of this year, we had 58 event Mid-March, we had to start canceling and postponing things. At one point, we had 261 events mid-March through December that either had to cancel or postpone. Some of them had not gone to contract yet, some had. Of the ones that went to contract, we have 18 events during that time that actually asked us for refunds. And a lot of them were charities where they need the money. If it's not going to be used right now for an event that's raising money, they need the money back. And then we had a few retirement parties, birthday parties, things that have a specific date that are happening and, you know, it's sort of hard to delay someone's birthday party. And so those things asked for refunds. However, right now, we have 45 delayed events. Some of them have been on the calendar now several times. They were on the calendar end of March, we moved them to May, then we moved them to July, but they're hanging with us, and their outlook is keep our money. So we've got their money in the bank, and we're just waiting until we can actually have the event that they're needing to have or wanting to have. Some of them are wants, like there's several Christmas parties that aren't happening, but they're talking about doing something for their employees maybe in the spring. There's also a number of corporate clients that we have, some of whom have been back numerous times to our building, and they need to have, for instance, a training that has to do with OSHA or something like that. So they're required to do it, they have to do it, they just need to be able to do it. We have been able to start doing some of the smaller things here recently, and now we're getting bad again, so we're not sure what's going to happen. But at some point, we're expecting it to be better. We're looking future forward, a hotel 18 months to 24 months in the future, we're going to be ready to use it at that point. And so I do feel that it is very much to the benefit of the Maxwell Center, Wayne County, and the city of Goldsboro to do what we can to get those meeting rooms and that bistro in that hotel and get the hotel built. Does anyone have any questions for me?
And just to mention something as well, with the amount of the cash incentive that the county is looking at, if we had to build the additional meeting room spaces on right now, you're looking at a minimum of $250 a square foot for new construction, that would be at least $600,000. So again, you know, it is a huge win-win for the county to make sure that we do that. And also, we're going to be working with BPR on some shared parking as well. So we're just excited about the possibilities that this hotel will bring us.
And one of the things that the hotel also offers us as far as some of these larger conventions, and all of you have been to conferences and conventions, but a lot of them want a 24-hour room so that the day before the event and even during the event, whether it's two days, four days, whatever, they have a room that's open 24 hours a day where their guests can come to that room, check in, discuss challenges, do whatever they need to do. Well, as a convention center, that's very hard for us to do because if somebody wants a room open 24 hours a day, that means I have to staff the building 24 hours a day. And it gets very expensive for that client, whereas a hotel is already staffed 24 hours a day. So if they decide to have the registration room at the hotel, it's a lot less cost and it's actually doable for the clients. So there are just a whole lot of different reasons that the hotel will be a great thing.
Wait, what's the timeframe?
Last I heard, once everything is approved and done, we're looking at 18 to 24 months?
Once we start construction.
Once they start construction. Any other questions?
Anyone start construction?
Hopefully as soon as possible.
We've been waiting a long time.
Exactly.
And this is something we need, we really need.
Yes, we do. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
All right, thank you all very much.
And I believe Ashlyn is here to speak on behalf of Travel and Tourism.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Yeah, so this is very exciting. I would say I started this position four years ago, and it was one of the main projects on the to-do list of finding a hotelier to be complementary to the Maxwell Center. So this day is kind of surreal, but. Good morning, Pupin. But it's also exciting because two years ago already, we did this big feasibility study. I'm sure all of you have read it, right? But it's pretty dense, but in it, one of the big things is the unaccommodated demand that we don't capture in our market due to not having a hotel on site for the Maxwell Center. And this unaccommodated demand that they identify in here was upwards to 1,700 room nights, which in dollars means about $1 million worth of visitor spending in our market and around half a million dollars worth of lodging revenue that our hotels do not capture. So that's a lot of tax base that we're not also getting in our market that Greenville gets, that our Johnson County neighbors get. So no offense to them, but we have this amazing facility, and now we're going to be able to capture this demand, grow our tax base for our meetings and conventions market. But aside from that, the other main, I guess, value that this hotel brings is, I mean, Seymour Johnson has amazing amount of room night generation in our market. You've seen the economic impact reports that they put out, and they are constantly looking for more hotels, of quality hotels, to contract in our market. And currently, we have about 1,200 hotel rooms in Wayne County. So this would bring in, that would push us over the edge of 1,300 of hotel rooms. But not all of those hotel rooms are contractable by the base standards. So this would be another way that Seymour Johnson can keep their airman for reserve duty weekends or families PCSing in and out of Wayne County here in our market so they don't have to, once again, commute to do their duty. And again, other events or other businesses and corporations around Wayne County, such as Duke Energy, are one of the main room night generators in our market. And this hotel would also accommodate that displaced demand that we are not able to accommodate, especially when we have really big weekends for military and events. So, yeah, and then the highway traffic on the bypass, I mean, all of this development is just really going to expand the blueprint of Goldsboro and Wayne County that hopefully brings in retailers, restaurants, and other small businesses out that way as well. But I'm excited. I think y'all, I'm pretty much preaching what you already know, but is there anything else tourism-wise that?
I was just going to say, you grew up in tourism and in the hotel business, so you know what you're talking about.
I would like to think so, yeah.
That's what you know.
We all like to think we are subject matter experts, but there's always room to grow and learn in many ways. And I think this will be another learning curve in some ways, right? We've never had to, you know, like as Mr. Honeycutt said, chicken or the egg. And a lot of times, convention centers build next to an existing hotel or hotels go into contract with a convention center. So this is a learning curve. We're going to have to learn how to partner and work together with our private hotel developers and operators to make sure we're going after the right conventions that are suitable to what their hotel needs are as well. Because this is a partnership. We're incentivizing them, and I think Wayne County is known for its hospitality and hospitable nature already, and I think this is just going to be natural fit for us to go into a partnership with a hotelier.
And I do want to thank Ashlyn for her help. We had a really good committee made up of Ashlyn, Borden, Andrew, Chip, excuse me, James, and myself from the county, really looking at this. But we also want to recognize and thank the city of Goldsboro. Octavius Murphy was kind of their head moving towards getting us, and then the county kind of partnered with them as we kind of took over the land issue. It was much simpler to make it just one negotiation instead of multiple negotiations. But we do appreciate Octavius and the city for what they've done as well. So we want to thank them.
Anyone else? I would just like to follow up on what Mr. Honeycutt just said. You know, when we started talking about the convention center, you know, initially we were looking at property out at Cherry Hospital, and that kind of fell through. And the property that the city had came up in discussion, and the first thing everyone says, you will never make it happen. Well, thanks to some hard work from city staff, county staff, I think we've proved everyone wrong because it's been a great working relationship with the city on making all of this happen. Because it's going not only to benefit Wayne County, it's going to benefit Goldsboro greatly. But again, I want to thank both organizations for the hard work and the effort that was put into this. Anyone else?
Just kind of piggyback on what you just said with the city. From the beginning, this check wanted us over here anyway, but we were able to strike a deal, and George Wood was very instrumental in doing that, our previous county manager. And as you said, the city was right there at the table with us. They helped us design this facility, so they had great input to the way it looks today. And I appreciated working hard with everybody over there.
And also, we need to thank our sponsors also, the Maxwell family and all of the other larger farmer operations that, you know, paid to have the naming rights for some of the meeting rooms. Because our farming community was behind this 100%, and without their support, we probably couldn't have made it happen also.
If I recall, I think that the private donations from the farming committee was well over $2 million, as I recall. That was just families that wanted to see this happen. And thank God it did happen, before Paul Kevin was sitting over there with a plastic over top of his computers, because every time it rained, it just poured in there. And it needed to be torn down. It had served us well, but his time had passed.
And also, we are still having a fundraiser out there now. I mean, we still have bricks available. I mean, I'll just get it with our clerk, Ms. Bowden, and we are still selling bricks. It won't pay the rent, but it, but in the, you know, in the future, your family can go out and, you know, sad to say, but a lot of the bricks is in memory of some, and some of the bricks, some of those family members have passed away since the Maxwell Center was built, but it's, don't forget our bricks. Anyone else? If no one else, I.
Mr. Summons, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. But again, we do want to thank Mr. Patel and his staff as well. With COVID, it has taken much longer for the franchising than he was hoping as well. But he has been such an incredible partner, keeping us updated. And we've done a lot of work on kind of vetting his company as well. Very successful in multiple areas in the state, now the state. We could not have a better partner working for us than Mr. Patel. So we do thank you for being here as well.
And also, you know, y'all were already a great partner in Wayne County, and we just, right, and just expanding, we are very appreciative. Thank you. If no one else, we close the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pate.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of agreement with BPR Properties LLC for the construction of a new Hilton franchise hotel at least 100 rooms with space that is sufficient to accommodate at least three breakout rooms between 1,800 and 2,400 square feet in total, along with a bistro-type bar to be located at.
At least, oh, I'm sorry. I missed the word.
3.11 acres of property at the Maxwell Center site, all property owned by the city of Goldsboro. And the county will pay BPR or its designated a total of $500,000 for construction of facility with final agreement to be reviewed and approved by the county attorney.
We modify that to say inappropriate budget in the, would that be okay?
And the appropriate budget amendment. And with the correct, one of the corrections that Mr. Honeycutt said, because a little tap over there.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Next on the agenda is special presentations. I think the sheriff will take care of these, please.
Sheriff Acock, I'll ask Captain Brian Dawson to join me up here, please. Once again, it's a day that I saw of a sad and a good day because I'm losing one of my command staff members to retirement. But he's been a very faithful member to the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. He has served honorably. He has been a loyal employee of Wayne County, and we certainly appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to present you a plaque from the county of Wayne, presented to Joseph Brian Dawson, Sheriff's Office, in appreciation of 25 years of dedicated service as a county employee, September 15, 1995 to December 1, 2020, the county of Wayne of North Carolina. And your weapon that you've carried for the protection of Wayne County for a number of years, this is presented to you, Joseph Brian Dawson, for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated during your career. Your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Thank you so much, sir. And Mr. Acock, I'll ask you if you'll adopt the resolution awarding him his service weapon to Captain Brian Dawson, please, sir.
We have a resolution. Have a motion?
I made a motion. Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-36, a resolution awarding service weapon to Captain Brian Dawson, and presentation of retirement plaque and service weapon.
Have a motion on the.
Excuse, I'm sorry. You want, sign you want.
I'd just like to thank the county commissioners, the sheriff, and everybody here to support me for allowing me to be a good public servant to the county of Wayne.
You are going to hang around?
Yes, sir. But I thank y'all very much.
And before we move, it's kind of bittersweet for me because this guy's my next-door neighbor, and he protects me. So I don't really want to do this, but I'm sure, he is, he is, he is a great neighbor, I tell you that. Pretty quiet, too. I like that. But he is going to keep his weapon, and so he's going to protect you. That's a good thing.
We have a good guard dog, too.
If you will turn around and just look at the camera and let Joel capture, maybe pretend like you're presenting that again, Sheriff. Let Joel capture a picture, one, two, three. Let Joel capture a picture, one, two, three, good job. And then you turn back around and you made the motion.
Mr. Page made the motion.
I've already made the motion.
Any discussion?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of y'all.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item of business is appointment committee. The appointment committee made recommendations on our November 17 meeting. So we can vote on today, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The appointment committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Harold Brashore to the Wayne Health Corporation Board of Directors. And that's in form of a motion from the appointment committee. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. The appointment committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Bill Page to the Wayne County Health Corporation Board of Directors. That's in form of a motion. All in favor, right hand. Unanimous. The appointment committee would like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Parker Sherard to the Wayne County Board of Health, replacing Mr. Robert Kegel. This comes as a recommendation from the Board of Health, and that's in form of a motion. All in favor, right hand. Unanimous. The appointment committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Dustin Pike, Edward Davis, and Charles Brogdon to Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance, and that's in form of a motion. All in favor, right hand. Unanimous. Consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a couple of budget amendments, and I will turn that over to Allison.
Okay.
Let's find them right quick.
The first one is number 156 with the Sheriff's Office.
Got it.
Okay. So this first budget amendment is a reallocation. The funds were allocated in the capital outlay equipment line item and needs to be moved to capital outlay vehicles. This is for the purchase of a dive team truck, and this is out of seized property funds. Then we have two budget amendments, numbers 157 and 158 for Board of Elections. Each of these budget amendments are allocations from the state cares funding, and this is addition, in addition to the county cares funding that we receive. You've seen some other budget amendments where various departments have received additional allotments, and that's what this is. And this was to help conduct a safe election for the Board of Elections and will cover various programs, supplies, temporary help, and things like that. And these two grants, the first one was $164,242. The second was for $35,200. And these funds had to be spent by December 30.
This is just pass-through?
Yes, sir. And that, those are the three I have for you today.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay. Do we have a motion from someone to approve this consent agenda?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve budget amendment 156, 57, and 58. Best fans.
Any discussion? All in favor, right hand. We do need to go into closed session?
The item of the new business?
Okay, okay. The new business, to schedule a public hearing on December 15?
Yes, sir. And again, we appreciate your willingness to do this. We would like to ask that the board set a public hearing for December 15 at 9:00 a.m. for incentives for a ground lease at Wayne Executive Jetport for a 20-year term with options to renew.
Need a motion? Yes, sir.
To move.
A motion on the floor, any discussion?
That'd be at 9 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Will that be here, Mr. Trenkett?
Yes, ma'am.
And also, at the jet port, things are really happening out there. This is, this is, this is going to turn into be great for Wayne County and probably at some point, this will complement the Maxwell Center, plus the Maxwell Center complementing the jet port because this is, this is creating, this is creating activity. The jet port is probably one of the best-kept secrets in Wayne County, and it doesn't need to be a secret.
All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carrying. Do we need to go into closed session, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir, to talk to your lawyers to preserve attorney-client privilege.
I should go to closed session, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion to go into closed session. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Does anyone else have any comment before we recess this meeting till December 1 at 9:00 a.m. at the A.J. Gurley 911 Center? Does anyone have any other further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention earlier when we had the motion that I made that we passed for the Maxwell Center and the hotel, that this would increase our occupancy tax. We made a deal with the city of Goldsboro and my law and ourselves to increase the occupancy tax, which has been a good thing. It helped, it helps for tourism, it helps grow it, it helped pay for some of our bills at the Maxwell Center. That was the, one of the reasons that we did that, even though James and his staff have done a fantastic job and have brought in many of events to pay for it. And we all thought that we would never be in that position that it would be paying for, which is a good thing. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And great job, guys.
Mr. Horace, you got any comments?
Also, this is going to bring 37 new jobs to Wayne County, which is much needed.
If you look at a total investment of an actual new hotel as well, you're looking, you know, anywhere from $10 to $12 million as well for new construction. That will be on our tax rolls as well. So it's a really a positive thing the entire way around.
And the point that you made earlier about the investment, whether we go up to $500,000 or not, the cost of building those extra breakout rooms would have exceeded that by far. And we're actually, and it's hard to understand, but we actually will save money in the long run, and it'll bring in additional income to the county. It's a wise investment.
We were, we were going to look at, as far as our CIP, having to look at expansion to the Maxwell Center, and that would have, you know, you're probably talking a couple million dollars if we had to look at expanding right now to add on really the true number of breakout rooms that we need now. This will help us right now in the short term and make sure that everything is a positive moving forward.
And with the vaccine coming around here and probably, as I said this morning, everybody should be getting vaccinated by spring, there'll be a post-COVID day coming.
Pinup, people wanting to get out and do things. So we're very excited. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Akak, the 911 Center, that's actually at...
10:00 a.m., I believe.
I think it is.
I know it's on the first.
I think it's 10.
Yes, sir, 10:00 a.m.
It is.
I had looked at, you're right. You're correct, it is 10. I had looked at the meeting going off the 7th on my calendar. Okay. Correction in that it will be 10:00 a.m. We recess until December 1 at 10:00 a.m. at the A.J. Gurley 911 Center. And we're very excited about that, and Joe's family is honored that this is taking place. And it'll be a sad day for Wayne County, but a great day for Wayne County. Anyone else have anything? If no one has anything, this meeting is recessed until December 1. Thank you.